Now I'll call this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance at the meeting tonight and also those folks that'll be watching us on G10 television. To begin the meeting tonight, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Cindy Edwards, followed by the invocation of our City Manager. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you give us, for the ability to be together, for these individuals to do the business of the city. Lord, we ask for your guidance, for your wisdom, for your blessings tonight as we go through different items that impact our citizens. Lord, we ask you for peace in our community. We ask you for continued caring and blessings that we all share each other so that we understand the value that each individual person brings to our community, Lord. We're so grateful for a brotherhood and a community that cares. We're so grateful for the blessings of being able to be here in an area and to have thought and dialogue about things that impact us each and every day. Lord, be with us today, be with us this week, and guide us in all of our actions so that we may understand the path that you would have for all of us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, have you been to provide a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting? I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here or not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have our session of public comment. I have one person signed up, Ms. Melanie Marzett. If you approach the dice.
Hello, Melanie Marzett, 403, off to Vista Loop. First of all, I just want to say to Council Member Warden, I wanted to thank you for always being kind and considerate. Even last year when I started to come to the council meetings, whether you agreed or not, you still did the same thing that you've done for years. You come up, you walk up, you ask how you're doing, shake your hand, and then you wait for a response. I want to thank you for that. The other thing is, I watched the last council meeting and you had some Onslow County residents who were talking about the whole storage facility. And I felt for them, and I understand where they're coming from with these pop-ups. It seemed like every time I go up Western Boulevard, there's a family dollar, or a family tree, or a storage facility. But I want to say that one of the reasons that I stayed in Jacksonville, well, two reasons, the low crime rate and the green space. I didn't grow up in green space. So when I initially came here, it was a little overwhelming just to see all the trees and the different things that was going on with that space. So I would like for council to really think about, know that there's land and it's for sale and for commercial use, but not every piece of land has to be necessarily, something has to be built on it. Just want you to think about the green space and the animals and the deers that we see more frequently now, and just think about, you know, the reason why some of us continue to stay here and live in Jacksonville. That's it.
All right, counsel, we have the adoption of the minutes, and there's about two consent items.
Move approval of the minutes and consent items as presented.
Second.
Any discussion here in all favors, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Go down to item number three. This is a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item number three is a request that has been made on behalf of Atlantic Ice Distributors Incorporated to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4.3, accessory use standards, specifically the use-specific standards for certain accessory uses, specifically to ice houses. This is a request that Mr. John Pearson and his clients, who are available for questions in the audience tonight during the public hearing for this amendment request, talked to staff back in December, and we had subsequent conversations, and they submitted that request in February. And planning staff reviewed what was being requested and tried to match it up to the current standards that you see for automatic teller machines, ATMs. And as a result, we think that this would put this more in line with the same as ATMs. And as a result, we have supported the amendment request, the major change being the bullet number two, which is reducing the 100-foot setback to 50 feet. ATM's already at 50 feet. The minimum building line for the structures are already at 35, and in some cases could be reduced to 10. So they're already going to be behind the standard minimum building line already. This wall signage amendment basically puts it in line with the standards that you find in Article 512 signage. It's based on the wall width, and it's an easy calculation. And then extending the timeframe where an ice house, if discontinued, would have to be removed from 60 to 90 days. And there were also a few adjustments that staff incorporated into those changes. We discussed those with the applicants, and they didn't have any problems with that. And just to kind of show the mayor and council and the public what we're talking about, this is an example from Jacksonville. And this is one of the current ice machines that were constructed after council had made the original changes to the UDO to allow ice houses with some specific standards. Be happy to answer any questions. As I stated, Mr. Brian Jarman with John Pearson Associates is here, as well as their clients from Atlantic Ice Distributing, or Distributors, Inc., sorry.
Is there anything to add? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
With that, we'll assess the regular meeting and open up the required public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this issue? Mr. Jarman.
I'm Brian Jarman with John Pearson Associates, 405 Johnson. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Jarman? Thank you. All right, you've been asked to consider the ordinance text amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion for the council to approve the UDO text amendment found in Attachment A because the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted CAMA Plan Policy 38.2, and is reasonable, and it advances the public interest. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Oh, crap. Let's see. Next, we have item number four. This is a map amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to rezone property located at 919 Gum Branch Road from residential multifamily low-density to office institutional conditional. This is home to the First Regional Free Will Baptist Church. To orient the mayor and council, this is on Gum Branch Road. The Chamber of Commerce is to the north. And this site was approved by the mayor and council. Special use permit was issued in 2001 when they moved from a location nearby, City Hall, to this location. They built a new campus and facility. With that special use permit, there were some conditions that were placed on that. So some of their planning board members remembered those conditions at the planning board last month. And as a result of the concerns raised by the board and the changing to office institutional, they actually amended their application, which is allowed per statutes because it's becoming more restrictive, to add those conditions back to the zoning. In fact, they added one. So there's now three proposed conditions. So planning board recommended approval of the changes to office institutional. Now it's office institutional because they brought that up. The conditions are identified as those three that are found on the second page of the staff report. That basically deals with if the enrollment exceeds 250, they'll talk with the city about a traffic impact analysis. Number two, there will be no lighted ball fields. Councilman Warden, you may, you can shake your head. I don't know if you remember that condition from planning board days. And then the third one is that the Bates and the Walkmore streets will not connect into the school site. That was another concern that the residents raised back in 2001. The CAMA plan identifies this parcel as public, so it's in line with the CAMA plan. So the CAMA plan supports the change. And at the planning board meeting last month, the staff and the planning board recommend that council approve the rezoning based on the findings of fact, A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the public interest by establishing a zoning district that is more reflective of the current uses. We've had several calls that have generated from the public hearing signs. So because of the hearing on the 19th of April that Ms. Marzett just brought up, we made sure that we were more strategic with location. This site received two signs, as you can see in the photos. So we went through the hearing notices. We've received several calls as relates to this site. And just for full disclosure, although rezonings, it shouldn't matter, but what started this rezoning request is it's zoned residential, and that gives them sign restrictions to 32 square feet. And the church has a desire to have a more modern signage package that includes an electronic message center. So that's kind of what the church talked to staff about. In fact, we've already seen one rendering of the proposed sign. So that was what kind of started this rezoning request. And changing to O and I will allow that, a larger sign package. And being that it's zoned, I mean, being that it's being used for institutional purposes, it makes sense to go more within institutional standard, and the conditions will be preserved. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Brian Jarman is here on behalf of his client, and I believe some of the church members are available to speak if there's any questions or if they want to speak during the public comment. I'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have.
Counsel, any questions, Ryan? Okay. Thank you. Now we'll assess the regular meeting and open up public hearing on this matter. Is anyone present who wishes to speak? Jarman.
Any questions?
Questions of Mr. Jarman? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Larry Mar.
I'd just like to tell you why we needed this done. Our church has been very blessed. We've got a new pastor about three years ago, and we have seen a lot of growth in our church. And also in our Christian schools has been successful. And we need more space. These plans that we plan to do is our current sanctuary will be gutted and converted into additional classrooms, and we will expand our sanctuary out in front of our current sanctuary. And what is currently our fellowship hall will also be moved into what is now the sanctuary. And that fellowship hall would become additional classroom spaces, what our plans are. But that's why we're here, and we would like to get some new signage if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? CNN 01, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you've been asked to consider rezoning request.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion for council to approve the rezoning request, accepting the evaluation found within the staff reports based on findings, facts, A through J being found in the affirmative, and the rezoning advances the public interest by establishing a zoning district reflective of its current use. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, on item number five, we have a map amendment rezoning of 130 Belfort Road from industrial to corridor commercial. And Ryan will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is another rezoning request, so the final of three agenda items for planning staff this evening. Similar situation to the previous rezoning, the existing facility located at 130 Belfort Road. The screen currently shows two parcels, but they've actually done a recombination map to kind of eliminate the lot line in between there, so it'll be one parcel. There's just a deed that's got to be recorded to kind of make that line disappear. But the site and the site around it, zoned industrial, as the mayor and council, I'm sure can recall, the railroad used to go behind this site and along 17. And back then, a lot of properties in this area were zoned industrial for that purpose. And churches and schools in industrial zone are not allowed. So technically, this facility is non-conforming. So because they want to connect the two back buildings, from what I understand, for restroom purposes, they discussed with planning staff and came up with this through a rezoning, and we would support that amendment. So that's why we're here tonight. So they want to rezone this to corridor commercial, which will eliminate that nonconformity. And the CAMA plan supports the change. It's identified as neighborhood commercial and public, as well as the other parts, neighborhood commercial, or, yeah, neighborhood, well, not neighborhood, sorry, NC, which is, I'm drawing a blank here, sorry. Okay. So it supports the rezoning. And if the rezoning is approved, this is what the zoning would look like. You can see in the area, there's kind of been some transitioning in this area. Longley Supply is zoned industrial, very easily could probably rezone to corridor commercial without creating any problems. The residential industrial, it's industrial, but there's residences there. So this is an area that's kind of transitioning, so that's part of the reason why we support the rezoning as well. This went to the planning board in April, and at that time, along with staff, the planning board is recommending that council approve the rezoning request, accepting the evaluation found in the staff report, A through J being found in the affirmative. The rezoning advances the public interest by correcting the nonconforming use that's here. And be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Jarman is here again on behalf of his clients, if there's any question of him. I don't know if there's any folks from the church here, but be happy to answer any questions for those of us that are here.
Any questions, Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll reassess the regular meeting, open a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this issue? Jarman.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you again. Okay. Anyone else present who wishes to speak to this issue? All right, CNN 01, we're going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you've been asked to approve the rezoning of 130 Belfort Road from industrial to corridor commercial.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion for council to approve the rezoning request, accepting the evaluation of the staff members with findings, facts, A through J being found in the affirmative, and the rezoning advances the public's interest by correcting a nonconforming usage.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Go down to the non-consent agenda items. This is our fiscal year budget adoption, and Mr. Josh Ray, City Manager, will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have presented to council this evening the FY '26 fiscal year budget. Council has reviewed the proposed budget, and we've talked about this for the entire current fiscal year. So part of our process includes reviewing items before we get to the budget adoption process and the consideration, so that you can have those dialogues with us prior to the budget preparation process. The North Carolina law requires that we adopt a budget before June 30. If council considers and adopts that budget this evening, then we've satisfied that requirement for fiscal year July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. The tax rate will remain at .60 cents. Water and sewer rate increases, as discussed by council previously, to 2.25% increase. And then the residential and recycling sanitation rates, $4 as approved by council. This will be the third year of these increments, as discussed previously. We presented the budget to the council on April 8. We posted the budget on our city website and hard copies for review on that date. April 22 was our public hearing. We have not received any comments from the public from the time that we've posted it online until today. May 6, we had a discussion workshop review by council. And then today, as in May 20, is the presentation of the item to the council. What you're considering is an estimated $142,728,023 budget. That includes all of our funds, projects, and operations. That is less than the FY '25 amended budget. We have provided the general fund revenue, so that you see the property tax rates. One item, just to draw some attention, again, we had a discussion, I believe Mr. Warden brought it up before, talking about sales tax. And so we'd like to show our citizens that we do propose a decrease in the sales tax for the year, just because we're seeing that nationally. So part of our challenge is to review these items as we see trends globally, statewide, and regionally. And this is our best educated hypothesis on what's going to happen this year. So we do that based on what we need revenue-wise. And so when it looks at the fund balance appropriation, you're seeing a similar number from last year to this year. The delta is effectively the fund balance from sales tax. If sales tax come in higher, then the need for appropriated fund balance could be lower. But the appropriate general fund fund balance is estimated at $3.039 million. The request in front of council is to consider the FY '20 '26 budget ordinance, the fee schedule, and the capital improvement plan. There are multiple documents that we've included inside of your agenda that's posted online, so you have the budget resolution as well as these documents for the consideration. If council approves it, then we'll move forward with those documents and start planning for FY '26. Mayor, that's all I have on the slides. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Ray on the budget? I think we've been thoroughly through this, and everybody should be familiar with what's in the budget, what's in the capital improvement plan, and also what's in the fee schedule. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the FY '26 project ordinance, budget ordinance, excuse me, fee schedule, and the capital improvement plan, FY '26 through 35.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the budget for the coming fiscal year? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We are going to go to some discussion topics now, and I think we're going to do it in here. You want to do it?
However you want to do it, Mayor. We've got a schedule. If you want to move it over to A and B, or you can keep it here.
Whichever works out for you.
We can keep it here.
Keep on rolling.
Yeah, we'll just keep on rolling. All right. Item number seven, this is a transition from car to body worn cameras and justice assistance grant for local grants. So Chief Phelps, Jared Phelps will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jared Phelps, here at Chief of Police, and I'm here to talk about our transition from in-car body cameras, or in-car cameras to body worn cameras. I'll give you an update on that, as well as discuss a grant opportunity at the end. So currently, Jacksonville Police Department, we have vehicle-mounted cameras. They are mounted in dashboard point forward. This was implemented in about 2014. We own all the equipment, so all the cameras for all the cars that are in there, they're owned by the city. This is a huge burden as far as data retention, cars, the officers, to make copies on videos, on CDs for court purposes. And all the data is currently retained on city servers, which is very expensive as One of the cons on this as well is the cameras only capture what occurs in front of the vehicle. So I, anecdotally, about 90% of what a police officer does is away from the car. Traffic stops is actually a very small percentage of what we do, so we do not capture a lot of our interactions with our residents. So and when we do walk away from the vehicle for a disturbance or domestic or anything, sometimes we capture the audio, and it depends on the distance. So we're missing a lot of opportunity to capture the interactions that we're having with our residents, not only from just an accountability standpoint, but also for an evidentiary standpoint. Where we're at now currently with our vehicle-mounted cameras is we're at the end of life. A lot of the cameras are failing us. They're an old system, and we're at the end of service. WatchGuard was bought out by Motorola in 2019, and as of what we've been told here moving forward, we can't get any equipment unless it's the new equipment, which requires us to buy a new contract with Motorola and transition to their new system. And that's going to be roughly about $123,000 plus or minus a couple hundred. So we have to buy into something at this point, because WatchGuard is no longer the system that we can utilize. So we either go to Motorola, or my proposal here is that we're moving, we move towards the body worn camera system and enter into contract with Axon. I used Axon in my previous department. It is a fantastic company. They are very easy to work with and integrating the technologies that we currently have with the body worn camera. Within our current fiscal budget line item that we have for this type of technology, we're going to utilize and obtain 55 cameras, and this should cover our patrol, traffic officers, our criminal intelligence units potentially. Depends on the numbers there. And we're in discussion with the school board right now to, I'm sorry, the superintendent to outfit the SROs as well in the schools, and that would be covered under our agreement that we have with them. One of the things with Axon is they automatically give us brand-new cameras after three years, so the technology stays current. Obviously, anything after that would require new contracts, but that's a down-the-road discussion that we would have with them. All the data is retained through evidence.com, which is a cloud-based system. It's very simple. Officer goes up to the station, it's Wi-Fi enabled, they're able to upload the information automatically. And there's technology there for them to auto-tag what the, each individual activation is as it relates to CAD, so it's a very seamless transition. And the best thing about this is within the contract, it's unlimited storage. So there's no extra burden on the city servers or anymore for retaining this data. With body worn cameras, there are some downsides, just so you know. The viewpoint is dependent on the placement of the camera, and it's typically forward-facing. So anything happens to the sides, the audio is generally captured, but generally not the video. That is a downside. And there are, can be some limitations on the view based on obstructions that occur in front of the officer during that time, but it's constantly running. There will be policy to guide this, and it will have exceptions of when activation would occur. An example of that is when we're in the hospital, if the recordings are protected by HIPAA, we cannot record in those situations. And there'll be other restrictions for officers to ensure that they are not recording in places where they should not be. Otherwise, it'll be generally always-on policy. One of the main reasons why Axon was selected was statewide, the courts are moving towards evidence.com for their digital evidence for trials. And this is a big thing. I talked to Mr. Ernie Lee, their district attorney. This is a very seamless thing for us, because always us using evidence.com will automatically allow the DA's office to access the evidence that's kept there. There is a program where they can give an accounted, the defense attorney, so they have access to the evidence automatically as well. And there's no altering of the evidence or anything. It's all secured. But this is a seamless transition for prosecution purposes, and he is very happy that we're going in this direction. I can tell you that. No more CDs, which is also an efficiency for officers from not spending time having to download. There's not that extra cost. And again, the efficiency on discoveries to, we can, the defense attorneys can access this information almost as soon as they know about the charge, and it's labeled, the evidence is there. So what you have before you tonight is actually what I put forth as a grant opportunity. I told you, we are utilizing our current budget to buy those 55 cameras, but there is a grant opportunity to obtain $50,000 in extra funding to hopefully expand off of that 55 cameras automatically. There is no match on this. It is a JAG grant. It is basically just money to be utilized for this specific purpose. So that's before you today to consider. And I'll entertain any questions if anybody has any.
Question.
Yes, sir.
You hear so much about systems being You hear so much about systems being hacked into.
Yes, sir.
To the best of your knowledge, how hack proof is evidence.com?
Axon is a very reputable company. They actually have an insurance policy that they will pay you a million dollars if their system gets hacked. They, they spend a lot of money into their technology to make sure that they stay up to date, their algorithms are immutable. I would liken it to Apple as very, their technology is so advanced, it's very difficult to access. With the state going on board and utilizing evidence.com as well, there is some comfort there as well that the state system has found this is a CEGIS requirement to apply it, which means it meets all the specifications for the security required on the state level as well as the federal level.
I got a question. Is this a sole source or is this something that falls under the bidding?
I can answer that. We're, we found a contract that we can ride on this, so we don't have to put this out for RFP or anything. So it's actually an easy, easy system now.
From my understanding, you've already got the expense covered in this year's the FY25 budget.
And in and out years, yes, sir. With, within the 55 cameras, the extra 50,000 will allow us to expand.
How much, how much is this contract with Axon going to be?
It's roughly ninety, a little over $90,000 a year for the next five years.
Cheaper than the car cameras.
Cheaper than what going with Motorola, yes, sir.
And I feel like that'd keep the officer more safe because they know how some coverage as they get away from the car. So if you go into a building or a home, I mean, there's no way that car's picking that up.
Correct, yes, sir. And there are some, a lot of issues with our current system. It, at the time, it was great technology. Technology has advanced quite a bit and the, the ability to have the body worn cameras in everything that the officer does, just it protects them because 99% of the time, it proves that they're doing the right thing, the right way in the best manner possible. And that's, that's the goal here is to continue to, to have that ability to present that information.
Thank you. Do you have, do you have an opportunity to access those footage for training purposes?
Absolutely.
Especially if you're dealing with, would you do random observations to, just to see how, especially a younger inexperienced patrol officer?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps as, as you're trying to train them and bring them along?
So the, the ability on any force that is utilized, we call them response to resistance that is applied or any investigation, internal investigation as that occurs, there's an automatic watching of the video that we required. In addition, we will do audits as well to make sure that we spot check what's going on with each officer to make sure that they are acting appropriately.
Will you have a policy in place as far as requiring the officer to have it on?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're currently working on that policy and I'll be having it to the, the city attorney here to, so that she can review it as well.
For the folks at home, this would be covered under the same state laws, access through the district attorney for, for families that wish to, to see this, they'll have to go through the same procedure that they do with car cameras.
Yes, they will. And there are restrictions on that, on the ability to obtain third party video redactions that occur because of, depending on the circumstances, but it is, would require to be compliant with state law on any release.
Chief Phelps, is there any specific guidelines with recording of juveniles?
There are specific guidelines, especially when we interview, that we have to ensure parental, when we interview juveniles, that we have the parents involved and their permission to do so. But just a general conversation, no, there are no guidelines. It's only when they are a suspect or in a crime. General conversations would be just open and just like everybody else into the public. But if somebody were to request that video, their information would be redacted because of HIPAA first and foremost. So their face would be blurred out, their voice would be changed and altered to ensure that nobody can, who know who they are.
And just out of curiosity, if a particular minor records were sealed, but there was the evidence on the tape, how was that handled?
If it's sealed, the video itself is sealed as well. So we're not allowed to release that as well in any circumstances unless a court order comes forward.
And who normally is the gatekeeper of that sealed?
It comes through the courts and our records division holds all those, yes.
Would resource officers have this? I mean, probably not for elementary schools, but definitely for like high schools. I mean, there's a lot of stuff.
We are in discussions with the superintendent right now to outfit all the SROs with, within Jacksonville Police Department. Currently, Onslow County SROs already have body worn cameras in their schools.
Does Axon have a car camera system also that you could add? I could see at times where there would be, it's a different set of eyes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Axon has a lot of technology available to them. It's, sky's the limit when it comes to them. There's so many things that you can add, but it's a, with every addition is extra money with them.
Still cheaper than when we first started talking about body cameras several years ago. We were talking a million plus.
Yes, sir. I'm sure.
And upwards, maybe as much as two million because of the storage. The storage was a problem back then.
Yeah. And with the, the storage capability on, especially with technology, the servers are getting smaller with larger data. So the technology is coming down. If you think about your TV 20 years ago, how big it had to be and now where it is now, it's, it's the same thing with this type of technology. It's advancing quite a bit and the cost is coming down. It's still expensive though.
And most of your officer, all your officers in favor of this?
It would be no different than what they're doing right now. So whether they're in favor or not, it's about protecting them and making sure that we are transparent with our community.
I would think a problem with it, car cameras are generally rolling the whole time.
Yes, sir.
The vehicles going.
They're rolling exterior and internally.
Right. But this, this one, the officer's going to have to activate as soon as he gets out of the car or?
The way the camera system is, it's always, they call it buffering. So as long as it's on, it's, it's always recording, but it's not recording the, the audio. So when you activate it, you're activating the recording to grab that. There are technologies that you can put in play to like the last two minutes will automatically pull up and it'll capture that. There are ways that if something were to happen, that we could contact Axon and they could get further back. But the camera, as long as the camera's on, it's capturing something. It's just whether or not it's, you know, putting a start on this frame and then an end on that frame, if that makes sense.
Yeah, some of, some of the problems that we were hearing early on with these were that some of the officers were violating, not ours obviously, but other, other police departments were violating policy by not activating the camera.
Yes, sir.
I was just curious as how that activation.
I've had that experience, especially when I was in my previous jurisdiction. You go through that, it is a policy issue to deal with and training. And then ultimately, those that don't comply will receive disciplinary action.
So let me, let me ask you again, are you going to do away with the, the mobile cameras?
The in-car cameras will be going away, yes, sir. Because I am, we're not going to invest into the, we can't invest into the current system anymore. So as they fail, we're, we're removing them from the cars and the transition to body cameras will be there. You can still capture traffic stops, it just won't capture as much as the current system does.
Do you have any idea what the lifespan of a, of a body cam is?
Well, Axon puts them at three years, the tech, because of the technology. And that's the way they've written the contract to be able to, number one, to sell and entice you as well, but to, and to stay current with everything. You could probably get a maximum of about five years out of a camera, I would say, with the technology as fast as it's going right now.
And what's turnaround time to start this? I mean, if we got to stop the car cameras, when does this pick up?
We're going to continue with the car cameras right now for what we have. So that's, that's not going to change some things. As we have cars come online, we have some newer cars that are getting ready to be delivered. Those will not have the in-car cameras. I'm anticipating around, by September, we will be fully functional with the body worn camera program.
Any other questions? All right, Chief, Chief is asking us to give them permission to apply or receive.
To apply, yes, sir.
Apply for this justice assistance grant.
Second. Third. Or fifth.
Any further discussion? Looks like a tie to me. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, typically, I just wanted to add on these grant applications, we, we asked council for permission for those items. Since we haven't discussed this item previously, Chief wanted to give that presentation to be able to answer any of these questions. And obviously, every member of council had questions that were some from the previous conversation and others from youth. So I appreciate the opportunity to allow us to present that and then for our citizens to hear that discussion as well. I think it's a value add as we transition to that, so appreciate that.
I guess I got another quick question there, but you don't have to, you don't have to come up. Does the justice assistance program ever do like the bulletproof vest grant where they actually fund these things, like where we could actually, you say three years? I mean, are there other funding sources that we're going to have for this down the road?
To my knowledge, the justice assistance grants do not fully fund for out years. It's usually one-time money that they will provide to get you in the door and then it's up to the jurisdiction to continue with the program.
Okay.
Yeah, the bulletproof vest, Mayor, like you're talking about, we typically count on those, every jurisdiction counts on that. This one doesn't have that type of residual program at this point.
Right. And we phase them. I mean, they don't come all at one time.
Correct.
Is that how the cameras are going to be?
The cameras will be a little bit different, but you're correct, the bulletproof vests are phased in because of their cost and the lifespan.
Okay. Thank you very much. We did vote on that one. Okay. It was a long day today. All right. Let's see here. No, it's a pretty good idea to have these things. Next we have FY25 third quarter financial and investments report.
Mayor's staff presents the HR and our quarterly financial reports to council on a quarterly basis so that we can look at some of the trends. These just happen to fall at the same time during the budget and it's going to happen every year that way because that's how quarters happen. So this one's a little interesting, but what we have before you on the financial report, we have the quarter ending March 31st. So when you're able to look at the document that we've included, what you're going to see is we typically track the major revenue streams. So that's going to be your ad valorem taxing, your sales tax on the general fund side. And then we look at every department and so you can compare revenues from the funds with the expenditures. So when we go down through here, typically if you're looking at a, a third quarter spend, you're going to think that your numbers are about 75% plus or minus. Expenditures are always going to be off because a lot of funds front load expenses and so you'll have, you're catching up throughout the year with your revenue stream. The numbers that we see, we highlight, the red numbers are the ones that would be outside of those percentages in case you have any questions. But we present this to council in advance so that you can review these numbers and then ask questions that go with that. And we also present the investment, the investment funds so that you can compare the dollar amounts, the maturity dates and the interest rates. You'll see on these interest rates, which is on the quarterly investment report, those numbers are, most of those are 4% in that 4% range. We do have one from the US Treasury that's a 32 month and it's a 3.25. So I would stand for questions on either one of those reports, Mayor, in the finance report or from the investment report.
Questions? Thank you.
Mayor, what we use on those, just as we're following that, these are our trend lines. So we use those quarters, but staff wise, the finance department is consistently monitoring daily, weekly, monthly trends to figure out where we're going to be. And that's what we go back to on the fiscal year budget when we talk about sales tax. We start seeing those numbers. You're going to see sales tax here showing that our projections for last year are very close, but these are our trend lines. So that's the, the finance report. On the HR report, Mayor, same kind of concepts. We give you these reports so that we can monitor. This request came from council as a result of wanting to be made aware of trends that we have in staffing, so that if there's anything that council needs to do to take action in response to these trends, council can consider those actions. So as we're looking at total personnel, whether it's 625 personnel or 574 that you're seeing in this, in this quarterly report, we're looking at why are we at that place now? Some of these things are, we have people that move out of town. Some of the numbers show that we have summer seasonal help coming in or going out. Those are just standard trend lines that we're going to see. But when you flip back over or go into your document, you'll see 573 full time. Right now, that's showing 48 vacant positions with 10 of those being over hired positions. So once again, we're staying steady at staffing level. Some of these positions, they may be in process now. So for example, the police department may have positions that are open, but they go through the basic law enforcement training program. So therefore, those positions are going to be open until they're filled as we go into that process. So that 573, I think that's a consistent number for where we're operating efficiently and effectively. Council has approved additional positions, but those positions are in process now in the hiring. One other thing you'll see is on that first page of that report, you see an incredible increase in number of applications. Now, the first marker there is if you have more positions open, you should receive more applications. Historically, we haven't seen that. We've seen a dip in the number of applications that we were getting both before and during COVID. So now we're seeing a rise in the number of applications. So the competition levels are coming up. So as we're filling those 48 positions, we're getting multiple applicants coming in. One of the things Mr. Massey and I tell all new hires on Monday mornings is we hire talent. That's people coming in with their skills and ability to do the job, not just because we have a position open. What our directors are doing a really good job of is making sure that the people they bring in can fill those roles, not just be in a position, but they can add value to it. So I think by seeing the increase in this quarter in applications, we see that as a positive for the organization as a whole. Maybe other questions in the report? I'd stand for questions or ask.
Could some of this be due to increased recruiting efforts?
We have changed our recruiting efforts, Mayor, significantly. And in a lot of those, we've put a lot of job fairs on now. And I think we're being a lot more effective in how we're doing outreach to find people. I know Dr. Washington is asking before when we talk about some of those skills of engineering, you know, where are we looking for people? Where are we advertising? We want to advertise in a place where we're going to find qualified applicants. I still rest on the concept that we have the United States Marine Corps constantly feeding us talent. And so when you look at our overall staffing, 23.4% plus or minus of our current staff have served in the military. That's an excellent benefit for us in this community. And so I think that's part of our recruitment effort, but it's not the only recruitment effort. We're looking and we target multiple schools across the state, typically from Raleigh East are our schools that we target, but we're targeting schools to try and bring in people for these positions.
I had a question, Mr. Ray. For our city employees, are we considered state employees?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we're not affected or covered by the North Carolina general statute rules?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, they give us a separate, even with our retirement, the way we do our retirement, you have your state retirement and then you have your local government retirement. You know, a lot of states even throw in the, the difference which we have as well, but police officers, municipal judges, magistrates, there's so many layers, but we don't fall into that, just like with the health insurance, you know, that's why we have our own. So there is a difference, but great point.
Okay.
And it's a recruitment challenge for us because a lot of times people are looking at those benefits and they're trying to balance out, even though they're not in our market. Onslow County is, is a big competitor of ours now as they look for deputies versus our police officers. So we're looking at those within our market, Onslow County being outside of the market because we're looking at a population marker. And that's why tracking these numbers matter so much to us because we're always aware of our surrounding communities, but council's focused on work within that market across the state to try and be successful.
Mr. Ray, I know that there's a couple of bills that's been circulating around the North Carolina General Assembly, but just for my knowledge, can you please research for me whether or not, if the North Carolina general statute 126-23 applies to the city of Jacksonville or any other municipality in the state of North Carolina?
Yes, ma'am. 126-23.
Yes.
What is the substance of that statute?
Public records.
Okay. And that does apply to us, correct?
Mayor, I would assume anything that goes into public records by the state of North Carolina would, but I don't have a clue about what the statute is, so.
But we are governed by public, the public records.
We are, yes, sir.
State of North Carolina.
I just wouldn't blanket because I don't know it, but we'll get it and we'll email it to you. We'll get it to you.
Very good question.
I've written it down. Yes, ma'am.
Plus, you're not an attorney, right?
Plus, I have no knowledge of what the legal interpretation is. If we can.
Thank you.
If I can get on her calendar, then we'll ask the city attorney. Apparently, she's busy. It's weird how busy she is, but.
Oh, is that the in-person?
That's right.
I'm just joking. You're doing a good job, ma'am.
Mayor, I, I appreciate council looking through these documents. It does matter to us because we, we're constantly throwing things at the council to review, just like on the last pay plan change that you did. You did that out of cycle and that's based on the market driver. So as we're looking at, there's, there's always a cause and effect. So if our staffing goes down and we're looking at our market, that's why these reports matter our staffing goes down and we're looking at our market, that's why these reports matter. And they matter in conjunction with each other because we still only have X number of revenue to solve issues that we have for 72,000 people. The numbers don't change. You know, the revenues are going to stay consistent year over year unless we have housing developments that, that come in and make a big impact, unless the base has a significant change in what they bring in, or if, for some reason, we have large economic development activities that come in, and we have that changing our base. If the VA hospital comes in, that changes our economic base. Until then, we're operating with the same level of revenues. And so, when our citizens are looking at these reports, this gives them a very good snapshot that they might not have if they just opened up the budget book and try and look at a year, 365 days' worth. This breaks it down into quarters. So, I think our, between our HR teams and our finance teams, they're giving information out that helps for the transparency so people can be informed well on the decisions you're making. So.
Mr. Ray, I did just have another question I just thought about. Considering some of the things that's going on in the federal government right now, do you anticipate that even if the city of Jacksonville does not have many full-time jobs but for seasonal work, that there's a possibility that our numbers may go up because of the fact that individuals will be looking for work? And if so, are we having any special type of hiring or job fairs to possibly recruit so those individuals are not having a long segue time between finding gainful employment if they're losing employment?
I think, Mayor and council, I think that's a great point because we know that there's going to be some type of transition, whether federal employees took an early retirement or they've just been told that their position no longer exists after X date, those positions coming in. I haven't seen those right now. I would have to ask specifically if, if Kimberly and the HR team has seen that. But I think it's something we need to be aware of in terms of, there's talent that's going to come into our community, and a lot of that talent may already be here and working remotely or working some type of hybrid schedule. At this point, I, I'm not aware of a hiring fair for federally eliminated positions, but it's something that we've dialogued about, that I think there's going to be people coming in. If you think about those 48 positions, that would draw an increase in those applications for those 48, depending on what those positions are. I'm not sure if those are going to be police officers, firefighters coming in, but on some of our other positions, it could very well be some talent. One example is, some of the people in HUD have decided for an early retirement. Potentially down the line, you could have partners that, maybe they're in local government, or maybe they're in some of our community nonprofits, where they would have talent come in. And I think that would raise their level. I think that level of experience is an excellent asset to a lot of our organizations locally. But I'll get you that information, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go right into reports, and I'm going to start with Mr. Ward.
Proud to be here, sir. No report.
Mr. Mayor, I just like to remind the public and those of us in the room here that Memorial Day is Monday. As we honor those who have fallen and remember those who serve, there will be a ceremony at the coastal, not this coming Monday, the falling Monday, I'm sorry, on the 26th. There'll be Coastal State Veterans Cemetery, a Memorial Day Ceremony at 11:00 AM if you are available to come. It's a solemn time, but it's good to remember while we have that day off. And then, we're almost into June, and Dr. Washington and I both serve on civic affairs. And June 13th, we will be celebrating Juneteenth, doing an official observation on that day. The ceremony will be in council chambers at 9:30 and out at the county government complex at 10:30. And the public is welcome to attend either one of those if they are able to. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I wanted to share with the public that last month, on April the 25th, the city of Jacksonville hosted the fourth Military Child of the Year semifinalist recognition event here at City Hall. This particular event recognizes our military-dependent children who are vying for the covenant title of the Military Child of the Year for our six branches of services. And with approximately 900 application this year, there was 105 semifinalists, which basically, out of that 105, 11 semifinalists, or 10% of that population came from the state of North Carolina. And out of that 10%, two finalists, the Military Child of the Year, the Marine Corps, Isabella Smith from Hubert, North Carolina, and the National Guard, Emily Bladencing of Havelock, North Carolina, were the covenant titles. So, out of the six covenant titles of Military Child of the Year, two came or represents the state of North Carolina. So, these young men and women are following the footsteps of their parents, serving their country on many different avenues that sometimes we don't even begin to think about, the sacrifices that even a military child has to come accustomed to in their time that their parents are serving. In addition, on, excuse me, on May 6, yes, we're in May, yes, I think, I am thankful that Mayor Sammy Phillips designated May 6. We were a month late, but there was just a lot of logistics. He designated that day as I am the Military Child Proclamation Day in the city of Jacksonville. So, kudos for the city of Jacksonville and our mayor for representing or allowing us to represent our military child on a citywide level in which they're very appreciative. That's my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor pro tempus. No report?
No report.
And I have none, so I'm going to pass it over to the city manager, Ray.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I do have a couple items here, but I will say that, back to Dr. Washington's comment, if you're, if the state of North Carolina is trying to be the most military-friendly state in the country, then it's actions like that that are going to give us what we need to show the support for our, for our military men and women who are serving to protect us each and every day. So, kudos to everybody for being present there and for making things happen. We recognize the Peace Officers, Peace Officers Memorial Day observance. Last week, Mayor Phillips was present there to, to be able to think about our officers that have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. This is something that we do every year because we remember those individuals. It's always a, a moving ceremony, especially for the mayor, because the mayor worked with these individuals and has a connection. Deputy Chief Weaver emceed this ceremony and did an excellent job leading us through the observance. Multiple members of the community were present. We had Holly Ridge Police, we had Jacksonville, Onslow County, we had the Honor Guard and the Support Battalion, Camp Lejeune. All of our people, Wilmington PD, Pipe and Drum were present. But the reason that we were there, we were honoring the lives and the family of Officer Renier, Detective Whitehead, Officer Liskowski, Deputy Black, Deputy Barber, Deputy Bohm, Special Agent McKee, and Captain Scantling. And so, for anyone that's, that's been a part of this before and that knows these families, just know that we always keep those families in our hearts for the service that all of our men and women do here in Jacksonville to keep us safe. As Ms. Marzett said earlier, the beauty of Jacksonville is that we are an incredibly safe community, and that's because of these people serving each and every day. So, for our, for our Chief Phelps and for our officers and for our firefighters that do the job, and for these men and women standing on the screen here, we say thank you. And thanks again, Mayor, for doing a great job. The other side of that is, we continuously hold our coffee with a cop outings. And so, it looks like this is maybe in Target with the Starbucks, and Corporal Phantom Miller just having a good time. Those poor people probably stood there for an hour and a half talking to him. They may still be there right now, and this was a week ago. So, anyone that knows our crew, but this picture here is phenomenal because it shows you that people actually care to be out. And the group of people that we send are beyond talented. Between Corporal Phantom Miller and Captain James, you see in the back corner, Captain Kellum, you see Officer Guzman up front, Sergeant Legana over here, Sergeant Jones, and I think I've got them all. Yeah. Just a great opportunity for us to be able to communicate with people on a level that matters. We talk about community policing, we talk about our employees getting out and talking to individuals. This is an excellent avenue for us to, to get out and about and have a good time. Bless their hearts. The last thing that I had on here, Mayor, is we had Camp Lejeune Marines assisting our parks staff. You know, a lot of times, we talk about some of these beautification projects, and clean and green is not just something that we're doing. It's a mentality, and it's a dedication to making sure that our community is looking its best at all times. Well, we've brought in some Marines that, that didn't have anything better to do than get out here and help, help Wills do his job. So, for this day, the parks crew had extra help, and they were, they were very effective in what they did. You see right here, this is Jack Amiette. These things don't just happen. Community partnerships are the, are the way we make, way we make the magic happen day in and day out. And our Marines are always active in volunteering and trying to help our crews get some, get some things done. Those are the last three I have. Mayor, I will say that today is a really special day. It just happens to be my favorite citizen's birthday, Savannah Lee Ray. And then tomorrow happens to be Ms. Edwards' birthday. So, to those people, happy birthday. And that's all I got. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
55, still alive.
Double nickel.
I'll turn to the attorney. Do you have anything? With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Turn the lights on.
You can stay.